I know, to get it up from the...
If you use the PDF, it takes forever. If you go to the agenda and then click on there to the sire line, it comes up.
Oh, we don't have...
No.
Good evening.
No, on the website.
Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:30, and I'll call our work session to order. And our work sessions are very informal, and tonight, we have two main items on our agenda. And the first is the Audit Committee meeting. And we have presenting tonight is our auditor, Jim Eikten, and welcome, who is a partner with Malloy, Montague, Karnowski, and Radasevich. I'm getting to say that last name, that very last name when the partners... So, welcome, Jim. And we've gone over all of the materials and your letters and everything, and so... But our residents need to hear from you as well, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll jump right in, then.
Please do.
Well, thanks for the introduction, Mayor, and members of the council administration. Again, my name is Jim Eikten. I'm with MMQR. See how I went through that lot quicker? MMQR CPAs. I'm the managing partner with the firm, and I'm here this evening to provide a summary of the audit results. Very good results for this year, as you'll find as I go through my presentation. The... Really, the first piece of information that you need to understand is really the role of the auditor while I'm here, really. It is a requirement in state law that the city complete an annual financial report. It looks like this. It's a quick... It's a thick... Not a quick... Certainly not quick. Thick document, 131 pages. It provides very detailed information on the city's financial results. It is also a document that does get submitted to the Certificate of Achievement Program with the GFOA for achievement in financial reporting. That document is required to be prepared by the city annually, and then audited by an independent certified public account, which is my role here at the city. As part of my role, then, the state, as well as auditing standards, requires several other elements of the audit of local governments, and they are listed on my PowerPoint. We are required to test your internal controls and your compliance with laws and regulations. Now, laws and regulations can vary depending on the type of financial activities you might have, the type of enterprise activities, maybe some grants that you might have received or not received. So, they do change as we go through. Typically, internal controls stay similar, but the city's always constantly changing the controls for a variety of reasons, but mostly to improve the strength of those controls. We're also required, under Minnesota state law, to complete an audit of your compliance with Minnesota-specific laws and regulations. Now, the Office of the State Auditor in our state puts together a list of the laws that are required to test. So, we don't really test every law, only those laws that the state auditor guides us to test. The city is also required to have what's called a single audit of federal awards if you were to have received more than $500,000 of federal-specific revenue. Now, the city did not receive that amount in fiscal 2012, so we did not complete that part of the audit, and it was not required. You tend to go in and out of that requirement depending on if you received any grants from the federal government in that particular year. So, in my documents, we also issue two documents that you've received, I believe. One is described as the Special Purpose Audit Reports, and then the second one is called the Management Report. Now, the Management Report is my document that I put together to communicate the results of the audit. It's intended to be a document that you could read through and get the audit results without actually having me here to present them to you. Probably easier if I'm here to present, but the document is intended to stand alone and provide the summary of the results. So, my PowerPoint tends to go through and follow that document as it is intended and outlined, really, in a presentation-type format. But to highlight, really, the first part of that particular Management Report, we do highlight and summarize the audit opinions and the findings. So, first of all, I didn't mention the opinion that I was required to give on your annual financial report, and my opinion is actually an unqualified opinion or a clean opinion in terms of the real terms... The real language is unqualified. I use the term "clean" because it makes more sense. But that is the opinion that you're looking for. It is an unqualified opinion, and the city's received that opinion for, I'm sure, going way back in time, and really, it's always received an opinion of that nature. I didn't have any other findings to report in the other areas I mentioned, in terms of internal controls or Minnesota legal compliance. It is a clean audit. There are no findings to report for this particular year. The city hasn't always received clean audits. There is findings that do come about, but typically, it's very limited in the city, and you do an excellent job of financial reporting and complying with the laws and regulations that the city is required to follow. So, in terms of the compliance portion of the audit, really, the overall portion as well, there are no findings to report, which is excellent. So, the other part of my audit goes through the other pieces of the audit. First of all, it talks about summarizing the results of the audit. There are a lot of pieces in there that I'm required to communicate to the city council in that document, including, as I mentioned, my responsibility, the timing of the audit. This year, the timing of the audit was very similar to the past. We just talked about it. It was probably a week earlier due to some scheduling differences from one year to the next, but really, kind of, the timing is very similar. We're also required to report to you if we changed our scope of the audit. Things can kind of come up in an audit that would require us to add to testing or change the type of services we're providing, and that didn't happen this year. But we would communicate that to the city council if it were to happen. The city was required to implement a new GASB, GASB-63. GASB-63 changed some terminology in your report. Really, it didn't really change any of the numbers, per se, but the terminology that's used is a little different, subtly different. Probably the one that stands out the most is, in the financial statement, the term "net assets" was used, and now they use the term "net position," which, yeah, I think it's probably a better terminology. But those are the type of subtle differences that you have. And that's very common for governmental entities to have to implement those new standards, and there's a number of additional ones coming forth that I'll actually cover a little bit later. Lastly, the document goes through other formal required communications, and those communications really tell the reader that we didn't have any difficulties in performing the audit. Everything was smooth and as we would have expected it to be. So, the second part of the audit goes through what I would define as the financial part. To me, an audit has two parts, the compliance portion and then the financial portion. How is the city doing financially? So, in our document, we go through a number of things. We tend to summarize the legislation that is impacting you financially. This particular discussion in my Management Report actually covers 2011 legislation. The 2012 legislation is still being summarized. I know that each and every day, it seems like something else comes out, which I haven't filtered through a lot. I'm sure city staff is probably communicating that to you more than I am at this point. But that's something to be constantly aware of. We also talk about property taxes. In our discussion in our management letter, we look at some of the graphs and trends in property taxes, and this particular graph on this page shows the taxable market value changes from the last 10 years. And you can see that the market values were increasing from 2003 all the way through 2008, and as our economy shifted, you can see the market values have gone down. Now, this particular presentation is important to be... To understand, these are values, the last one, anyway, is January 1, 2011. Since January 1, 2011, or maybe shortly thereafter, the market values have tended to either flatten out or get better. So, this might be... The timing of this particular graph is probably a little slow to react, and that's really just the result of our property tax system. These particular trends is very similar, if not exactly, the trend that you're seeing all over the state. I've read 30, maybe 35, city reports of this nature, and this graph looks exactly the same. Now, there's some variables here and there, but it's very, very similar to what you're seeing in all city governments here in the... Specifically, in the metropolitan area. So, what does that mean? We also use, really, a tool to provide some management sheet of information in providing a graph that shows average tax rates. Now, the average tax rates presented here does show the various components of the city's taxing entities, or the residents' taxing entities, but we're focusing on the city. And you can see the average tax rate in this particular graph is very similar to the seven county metro area, as well as the state averages. In 2012, your average tax rate was 43.2. The seven county metro average is 43.4, almost exact. Statewide, it was 46.3, so you're less than that particular average. When you throw in and add in the county, which actually has quite a bit lower average tax rate, the overall tax rate to your city residents is lower than both the statewide average and the seven county metro area average. So, what does that mean to you? Look at the property tax rates. You look at the market values. Typically, all of that data calculates and formulates into a property tax revenue system. And this particular presentation I have here in front of you presents the revenues on a per capita basis for all the governmental funds. It includes the general fund, but it includes a number of other funds, special revenue, capital project, and debt service. Now, when you look at those two earlier graphs, you'll see that the property taxes line is generated from some of those earlier factors. So, you're taking into account you have the same tax rate, really, as your statewide, actually, a little bit less, but you're generating more revenue per resident than your statewide peers. Now, why is that? Well, it could be a combination of factors there, but certainly, your property tax rates, the level of commercial and industrial properties, and a variety of other factors. Get into that. But you're really generating more revenues on a per capita basis, even though your average tax rate is lower than the average. Other elements of this particular graph that stand out to me is the city's revenue on a per capita basis. In 2011, it was about $765. Statewide, it's about $870, I guess, for the last two years. So, your revenues per capita are below averages statewide. Why is that? Well, probably, the one that stands out is intergovernmental revenue. You probably are receiving less state aid, which is a number of things, not just local government aid, but there's a variety of MSA aid, other grants, that sort of thing, than your peers. So, again, what does that mean? Well, typically, when I look at that particular graph and revenues are below average, you typically see that expenditures are below average because of the... Really, it takes a certain amount of revenue to run the city, and you only have so much money to spend, so you typically have lower-than-average expenditures when revenues are lower than average. And that's reflected on this particular graph here. You can see that the city's average per capita expenditures on a current basis is about $566 per resident, and on average, at the state level, statewide, it's about $578, $584. So, you are spending less than average, which is excellent. That's what you want to see. It shows efficient spending on the part of the city. It shows control over your resources, and really, just oversight in the part of the city. One element that was pointed out when I looked at this is that the city does have probably a different classification system for one category there. You'll see that recreation in this particular graph is quite a bit below the average. Well, the city... I will say, they classify parks in the... Is it public works? Am I saying that right? Parks is considered public works here in the city of Burnsville, where most cities have parks as part of recreation. So, all the total is probably very similar. The individual categories differ based on categories, which happens time to time, but it's important to point out when you look at this graph. I also want to point out the bottom numbers. It's important to look at the debt service costs of the city on a per-resident basis. You see that in 2011, 2012, the city does have below-average costs when it comes to debt service on a per-resident basis, which, again, shows good fiscal management in terms of overall debt levels. Then, we get into some information on very specific activities of individual funds. This particular graph is detailed, but it does show that the city's fund... Individual fund balances improved about $2.5 million in 2012, about $500,000 is in the general fund. I'll talk about that a little bit more. But most of that increase is in tax increment. Now, tax increment funds tend to vary depending on the timing of collections and the timing of projects. So, it's not unusual to see some of those swings. Even the construction fund tends to go up and down based on project-related items. So, the general fund did increase about $500,000. That's the main fund of the city. You'll see here in this particular graph that the fund balances have been increasing slightly over the last four or five years now. The city does manage its fund balance levels with a policy. The fund balance policy has a stated goal to maintain a minimum of 35% of fund balance as a percentage of expenditures, really, 35% of its operation in terms of fund balance. The end of the year, the city's fund balance ended at roughly 52.1%. That's not even roughly. How old would we go with? 52.1% exactly. So, you can see as part of the ending of the year that the city's fund balance levels are higher than what's stated in the policy. Now, it's up to the administration and the city council to take that information and utilize it in its future plans in terms of what that might be utilized as they relate... Take those comparison policies. And I know that's probably an item that's going to be covered a little bit later tonight in the second agenda item. Now, I do want to kind of relate back a little bit. The city did adopt a budget that planned for a fund balance decline of about $500,000, and you see, as I mentioned earlier, that the fund balance was above... Increased about $500,000. All of that, or almost all of it, relates to the expenditures. Now, expenditures were under budget by about $1 million, which generates that swing that I was talking about. On the revenue side, the city's revenues were within $17,000 of budget. And we... I expressed this in an earlier meeting. I can't think of an organization that was that close on its revenue budget in all the years that I've presented. A $33 million budget in your general fund, and the general fund revenues were within $17,000. That shows excellent fiscal management on the part of the city. On the expenditure side, certainly, you're seeing a swing in the correct direction. When you look at the $1 million I talked about, there's really not one item that stands out there. It's a variety of items that are causing that. Multiple departments, multiple divisions are causing that. You know, the administration, the insurance, what category stands out, parks and wrecks, fleet department. It really was entity-wide. But again, that's the direction you want to have when it comes to expenditures. So, I'm going to move forward past... Well, this was a good graph, anyway. You can see here some of the categories of revenues on a five-year trend. This particular presentation shows that the city's general fund revenues decreased in fiscal 2012 by about $500,000. Most of that was in the area of investments, investment earnings, and that tends to go up and down based on the value of the investments, not so much the earnings on those. The city typically invests long-term. It holds investments to maturity, and so, they're going to get the capital, if you will, invested in these investments, but they do the value of those swings based on the market. So, financial reporting, we do reflect those changes, but at the end of the day, the city does receive all of their investment earnings on the investments that they have. And then, in the expenditure area, this particular graph does show some key elements of the city's trend lines when it comes to expenditures. Public safety is certainly the largest category of most cities when it comes to expenses, and also, most cities are also seeing very similar results when it comes to these trends. Public safety tends to be the greatest need, most recently, in the last four or five years for cities, and you're seeing a very slight decline in the general government activities as you can see that your city is. So, this trend line is very similar to most cities that we're working with. So, a couple of more graphs in terms of the enterprise funds. The city has certainly a large number of activities when it comes to the enterprise funds. I'll go through some of those here, but this graph does reflect on some of the bigger ones, showing the changes in fund balance. You can see the water fund... Excuse me. Water and sewer fund did have an increase in its fund balance. The stormwater fund also. The Burnsville Performing Arts Center did have a decline, but is certainly seeing improved financial results at that area. And then, lastly, the other non-major did decline slightly. The water sewer fund that's presented... We present these graphs to reflect on a couple of things, to show the revenue trend lines, expense trend lines, but the two kind of lines show really operating income and loss basically after the year, but also excluding depreciation, because depreciation tends to... The cash outflow tends to differ than the expense recognition. So, we do show that separately. And you can see here, the water and sewer fund showed very significant improved results. I think the revenue in this category is up about $600,000. This particular presentation is no surprise to me, considering the... Every city has seen significant increases in its consumption in 2012. The weather was significantly different last year than it is this year. So, you might actually see this go the other way in terms of water activity when you look at consumption for next year. Also, most cities are seeing the same decline in operating expenses as the MCES, the council's sewer charges, costs have gone down, or did go down in 2012. This particular fund is the Burnsville Performing Arts Center. Here, you're seeing consistent results over the last few years, but improving. You can see here that the revenues in this account went up by about... Or this fund went up about $115,000 this past year. Certainly, in this particular activity, you would expect the expenses to go along with that as there's events and items going along. I did make a few notes, which I felt were probably the highlight of this particular fund, is that in 2012, it came awfully close to providing a positive cash flow, which, when you exclude depreciation, which is a lot of the expenses here, you're seeing a very... This operation getting better and better as each and every year goes along. So, that's really the positives that you can take from the Burnsville Performing Arts Center when it comes to that particular fund. Lastly, I just wanted to reflect on the ICE Arena. The ICE Arena Fund has seen its... Some changes in the last few years, and mainly in 2011 and 2012 due to the depreciation. You can see the depreciation went up due to some capital projects that were going on there. But you can see, at the end of the day, that the cash flow, the operating income prior to that depreciation is positive for 2012, and you're seeing a positive uptick in that particular line, mainly due to the downturn in the expense side of the equation. So, I will move ahead, then, to really, the last graph that I have up here, and this is very small number, so I don't necessarily need to get into each and every one of these. But this is a presentation that the city has in its annual financial report that shows the city as a whole. It's really entity-wide information. It takes all of your data, all of the financial activities, and puts it into one statement. And you can see, in 2011, the city saw a positive impact on net position, as I mentioned, new terminology, from 1.6 positive to almost 5.7 positive increase in net position in 2012. Now, there's a variety of factors there, but enterprise funds improving was certainly better. The city received a number of capital grants this year, including some MSA, Minnesota State Aid, as well as some of your assessment activities that are having a positive impact. So, the city's overall financial position improved almost $5.7 million in 2012. So, you are seeing very positive results when it comes to your financial picture. So, lastly, I wanted to reflect on one of the items in our presentation that talks about accounting and auditing updates. I mentioned the one implementation that the city implemented. There's another one next year that the city staff's very excited about implementing, which will change some of the numbers, but certainly not dramatically. But most of... Probably, the one that stands out for this city council to be aware of is that there is a pension standard that was approved, pretty recent, that will be required the city to include on its entity-wide information, not its fund-based information, entity-wide information, the city's portion of the unfunded obligation at both... At PERA specifically. So, you are required to report a liability for that particular item, which is a pretty big number. So, if you're seeing any information on that, if you're seeing people talk about the pension standard, I know the staff is very interested in it. That's an item that will be implemented, I think, in 2015? 15, I think, is the year that you'll have that. So, that's something to be aware of. So, in summary, I did issue a clean opinion on the city's financial statements. We did not report any findings. As I mentioned earlier, the city will... Has in the past received a Certificate of Achievement in financial reporting, and we will be submitting that for, again, next year. The city is continuing to see an improvement in its financial condition, both entity-wide and specifically in its general fund. Then, I just wanted to point out that the city does an outstanding job of continuing to assess its financial position, the results. Certainly, you're seeing in this document an adherence to the budgets that the city council is receiving. Really, you can rely on that data to make informed decisions, which is an important element of my audit and what I provide to you. So, with that, I'll open it up to any questions that you have.
Questions for Jim?
I have none. Thank you.
Suzanne? Thank you, because it's wonderful for you to also present that for our citizens, because we get the background, and we read through all of it, and the caffers, wonderful. But one of the things that Jim and I know, this is not something that you're required to do, but as I went through the background and just looking, one of the things that we are always focused on is the preservation of our AAA.
Okay. Your bond rating?
Our bond rating. And our market value is $4.3 billion. And so, I'm looking at our infrastructure investment is a half a million... A half a billion dollars. And so, all of those things, and the infrastructure trust fund and the activity that... And the decisions that we're making. My hope is that all of those decisions we're making is going to preserve that AAA rating. There are a couple of things that I know we have no control over, but I see some changes happening with the per capita income and the market value. And you spoke to that. Our market value is beginning to take an uptick.
Yes, I think we talked about that briefly, yeah. I don't have that data, but I know we talked about it in our meeting.
Because I just want our citizens to hear that.
Yes.
And the other is our per capita... When I was looking at some of the... Our per capita income may be a little lower.
Mm-hmm. Look, it is lower than average. Now, a lot of that has to do with the... In my opinion, that has to do with the stage development of the city.
Yes.
You are a fully-developed city, so a lot of these revenue categories are based on generated activity, building activity, franchise fees, you know, special assessments activity. If you're not really a... If you're fully-developed, you're not generating a lot of those types of activities. So, that's part of the reason for that. And you probably have, on the expense side, equal and opposite costs that you don't have either.
And then, with all of the decisions that we've made to look at beginning the redevelopment of the Minnesota River Quad... of the Minnesota River Quadrant, that will continue to add more tax base, and that will also help.
Right.
So, the questions I'm asking is for, also, to help our citizens understand that with everything that's going on, there is a lot of opportunities that's before us, and a lot of things that we're working on that's going to help those two pieces.
Right.
Improve in the city. So, when you look at the decisions that we're making, they're moving in the right direction that will help to preserve our AAA rating.
Right. Certainly, financial decisions, the financial results are, are very strong when it comes to the financial decisions. I'm not a bond raider, I'm not here to provide that information. But one of the things that you may, you even pointed out, there are things that are out of your control when it comes to bond rating, that you really have no control over. But one thing you do have control over is the individuals within the room.
Yeah.
A lot of, a lot of bond raters are interested in the financial individuals who are within your finance system and the decisions that they made. And certainly, one of that last comments I pointed out there is the ongoing assessment on the part of the staff is exceptional, in terms of looking forward, looking at results, and making sure they're making the right decisions. And bond raters use that as much as anything to guide the city. Certainly, financial numbers are important, but certainly having the right financial expertise is also important, and you certainly have that here at the city.
Good. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Jim, thank you very much for another great audit, and to our staff, thank you very much for all that you do. And so, I'm taking that this is going to be our 17th CAFR that's going to get an award. Right? Because we've had 16 years of excellence in reporting, and then with what Jim just presented tonight, this will be the 17th CAFR, right? Then we'll get excellence.
I think you're right.
Award in reporting. Okay, thank you very much. It's another good piece of information for our citizens to know. And so, I thank our staff for all of the good work, Heather and Kelly, and thank you so much. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Hey. Yeah, his, we usually get his book. He usually gets, there's no book, his PowerPoint. It's in the CAFR. It's not his book where he... Okay, the next item is the, our five-year financial plan budget discussion. And presenting this evening is our city manager, Heather Johnston, and our financial accounting director, Kelly Stray. Okay, Heather and Kelly, it's your show.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Heather Johnston, the city manager. Normally, we're sort of with one staff person short, so I'm going to help Kelly out in terms of the introduction, and then she'll do the majority of the presentation. What we're going to do tonight, really, is a high-level overview. We're not looking for specific decisions on the budget, but really looking for some guidance from you in a number of different areas. As, as you heard our auditor say, the city's financial condition is strong. And he was very kind to say that it's due to your strong financial staff, which of course we do have. But really, when the bond raters look at what we're doing, they look at the leadership, they look at you all and what you're doing in terms of strong financial management. They ask us about the positions the council takes, they ask us about your views on things, and so, that is the kind of policy-level leadership that they look to as well. And so, that's something that you all have heard from us before. They have, the bond raters have told us, we have a very strong financial position, we've got a strong financial policies in place, and that is due to your leadership as well. So, I just want to make sure that that's clear for you all, as I think you do know. But that's really due to the long-term financial planning that you've done consistently for a number of years. And so, when we talk about the purpose of tonight's meeting, this is sort of an agenda of sorts. We're going to talk about the changes from last year, really, some of the legislative changes, things that have impacted some of the planning and the good work that you did last year. We're going to look at the financial plan funding levels. What we're going to do, this presentation, as you all know, you're going to hear about levy limits tonight, and we'll talk about that a little bit. What we've tried to do is give you, give you sort of a current service level, sort of ignoring levy limits partially, to help you understand kind of the drivers, the cost drivers of what the planning that you all did last year looks like. And then, what we'll do is we'll layer onto that, the levy limit piece, and we'll talk about some of the implications of that, some of the options as well. The policies, some of the guidance, we will give you some different policy questions that we're going to ask for your guidance for, in terms of, you know, what is acceptable and not acceptable for us to really consider as we're going into our work over the next few months, to bring back to you when we come back in August, so. I'm going to talk about the pieces in the legislative session, and then I'm going to turn it over to Kelly after that to go through some of the financial pieces. The good news, we'll start with some good news, is that they host the Economic Development Proposal. We did some work with the City of Inver Grove Heights, and Representative Atkins and others were very helpful, Representative Morgan. And we were able to secure some grant funding to help us with our economic activities, specifically in the MRQ, the Minnesota River Quadrant. That's one of the places where we have been trying to get development, and with a landfill in that area, it's been a little bit of a challenge. The second piece that's a positive, and we're still trying to figure out what the financial implications are, is the sales tax exemption. We've gotten some preliminary guidance from revenue, so, to telling us what is actually exempt, what is not exempt. Generally speaking, business-like activities of a government would, would not be exempt from the sales tax. So, for example, our golf course, that is considered one of the types that would not be exempt. Some of our neighbors have liquor stores. Pardon?
The Performing Arts Center is not exempt?
Mayor, that is one of the questions that we've asked. We don't know. The Performing Arts Center, it's not clear whether that's exempt or not exempt. The ICE Centers, it's not clear if that's exempt or not exempt. And so, those are a couple of the questions. So, as we do estimates, those will change, those questions will, once we, as we get those answers, we've asked those of revenue. And so, as that guidance becomes more and more clear, we'll have better estimates for you all. Police and Fire, Parapolic and Fire, they had some changes, and they also have, I think you heard our auditor talk about some of the underfunding of those funds. It's really in terms of some of the losses that those funds have taken in the market over the years. So, there's a, an increase in statute that will take place over the next two years of about 1.8%. The Affordable Care Act, we are locked in on our rates for 2014 for our healthcare, but that, as we look at, there are different fees that as we would expect the carriers will pass through to us, and that will be taking place and impact us in the 2015 budget. The final piece, really, with the legislature, is the levy limits. You all have heard the levy limits. There's a calculation that's made, which is what your levy, your general levy is. There are certain levies, such as the debt service levy, that are exempt from levy limits. So, we have a calculation of levy minus aid, and for the first year, the city got, in over a decade, the city received some local government aid, about $86,000 roughly. And so, we would subtract the local government aid from that levy amount, and then plus 3%. And so, you're doing that on your general levy. So, that is the, sort of the context in which we have, the table has been set for us at the legislature. And so, we will continue to kind of weave that into the presentation, as Kelly continues on. As you'll, you'll hear her say, as you know, we get some information throughout the year. And so, our estimates are only as good as our most recent information. There's some information, I think, we got from Dakota County today even, on tax increment financing, so some of those numbers may, may change later in the year. But we're, we're here to give you a context and seek some guidance from you. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kelly Stray, Finance Director.
Thanks, Heather. I wanted to start out by giving you the context of where we came from in 2013, the 2013 levy. It, we were at a total of $27.5 million, and you can see the majority of that is in the general fund, with an ITF levy of $2 million. That's for maintenance of our streets and parks. And then, our forestry fund, we have a long-term plan on the forestry for the Emerald Ashbore problem that we may be facing, probably be facing. And then, there's the debt service, which is $1 million. You can see, that's a fairly small slice of the pie, as Jim mentioned in his earlier presentation, that we do have a fairly low debt service rate. And then, we have our EDA levy, which is not included in the levy limits, and the EDA is a separate organization, but we have, we've always treated it as part of our discussion purposes, part of our whole levy, because it is something that you all control, and we think of the levy in total, rather than separating out that portion of it. The council has to act to certify an increase in the levy, otherwise it would stay the same.
Heather and Kelly, can you please, so that our citizens know, because our debt management policy says that our total general obligation for debt is not to exceed 2% of the total market value. And I know we're way below that, but I want our citizens to hear that.
I'm sure that Jenny has that number.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's something we have in our CAFR every year, but...
Yeah, I know, it's...
And Madam Mayor, just also, one thing that you had asked, we did see an uptick in our property value, our total market value again. And so, we're almost at $5 million, or $5 billion, excuse me, in terms of that, and that is an improvement over last year.
Yeah, so, which is good. I just want those numbers out there for, because I've combed through the CAFR and all of this, just so our citizens know that we are in a strong financial position, we have a very, very, very low debt, and we do have a policy that states that it's only going to be 2% of, of the total market valuation, and we're so, so, so far below it.
And 2% of the total market value is $150 million.
And we're way below that.
Way below that.
Yeah. We're only, we're about $51.
Yeah, less than $4. Okay. Also, I think it's good to note, the things that were talked about in the discussion last year, and the policy decisions that you made, you've been doing five-year financial planning for, I think, almost eight or nine years.
Yeah.
That every budget year, the council doesn't just look at this year's tax levy, they're looking at the next five years, next, this year, this year and the following four years, and how do the decisions that you make today affect the next year's tax levy, and the next year, and the next year, which I think is an excellent policy. And that way, you can make the decisions in context of, of what you're going to be facing the following year. Little did we know that we were going to be facing the levy limits that we had. I actually had gone back and listened to this very meeting's discussion.
Yeah.
And it was very much planning on the, the decertification of the TIF district, and we'll talk a lot about that as in the coming slides, but it, I think just about any other year, the levy limits have not been a factor for Burnsville, and this year, it will be a factor that we will, it will be a challenge that we will be facing.
And the challenge is because of the decertification of TIF II.
Correct.
And which was reflected in those discussions last year, which reflects the 6.9 that we identified, but it's not new tax, it's just increment from an existing district that's just going to be moved over to the general fund to help us pay back the infrastructure trust fund that we, we didn't pay for about three years.
Yeah, and we have a few more slides on that as well. Some of the decisions that were made last year would be that the ITF plan had originally called for a $50,000 annual increase, and that was delayed last year. Emerald Ashbore was also supposed to have a $50,000 increase, and Parks Capital was $100,000. Those were all delayed, thus reducing the base for 2013. It did help keep the levy at a lower level last year, so last year's levy only increased 2.5%, but it does give us a lower base now that we're facing levy limits. TIF II decertification, just what we were talking about earlier. TIF II, a TIF district takes a certain area of properties out of the calculation of the tax levy, and sets those, that, the taxes generated on those properties aside for certain purposes. And the purposes in these areas was for economic development and for building roads and infrastructure that supported the growth in the County Road 42 area over the last several years. It was very successful. It generated, in, in 2013, we're expecting it to generate about $2.3 million of taxes. Of that, this, when a TIF district is in place, all of the taxes that would have, that are, that grow are going to the TIF district. That includes the city's share, the county, and the school's share. So, now that it decertifies, we will get back property value that will increase, absorb about a $1.1 million of the city's general fund tax levy. The school district and county will also get 1.2, approximately. These numbers are a little bit hard to nail down, but that's, that's an approximation. So, they, this levy would have to be, the tax levy would have to be increased by 1.1. Council would have to act to increase the levy by 1.1 million in order to see that, but it will absorb the $1.1 million.
To see that in the general fund.
Yes.
Yeah. Just so of people, our residents who are watching, we live with this stuff, and so, it's like inside speak to us, but they need to know what it is we're talking about.
Madam Mayor, I mean, this is one of the real true benefits of long-term financial planning, is that you all saw when this TIF district would be decertified, and so, you can minimize any impact on the taxpayers of a tax increase if you time it properly, so that you can do it at the same time the TIF district is decertified.
Yeah.
Okay. So, preliminary projections, back in November of 2012, when we were looking at the final budget for 2013, we were estimating what 2014 was going to bring us. And we were looking at an 8.2% tax increase, levy increase. And of that, 4.1% or 1.1 million was for future, current, or funding, current services, and other planned increases in those financial plans that we discussed earlier. The 1, the 1.1 million council had set aside to increase the levy for the infrastructure trust fund, which is for the maintenance and repair of streets, bridges, and parks. Current projections, as we worked on it the last couple of months, we, we look over all of the counts as, as a first glance at it, and we are looking at a lower projection. And a lot of that has to do with the sales tax exemption, which Heather spoke of earlier. We're looking at a savings of about $225,000 to the general fund, at our best estimate at this point in time. That would probably be one of the bigger factors. We've also have some other revenues that are coming in a little bit better than we projected, and so, we're looking at 6.9%. And that still is maintaining the 1.1 million increase in the infrastructure trust fund. Levy limits, we tried to put together a chart here to explain levy limits, and we, the state breaks down the levy into some special levies that they don't, that they exempt from levy limits, and our EDA levy would not be included in that, that's the first line. The second line would be levies that we have for our debt service. So, they would not prevent us from meeting our pending bond interest and principal payments that we have, and that's what the majority of this is. You will see that that doesn't exactly match our debt service levy, and that's because we have some debt that's paid through the ITF fund when... When we issue debt, we levy in the ITF fund to pay the debt service of that. And then also, in the general fund, we also have some transfers that are going to pay some debt. So that leaves the balance in that general levy, ITF, Emerald Ashbore Fund of $25 million in 2013, that we could take 3% increase on that and then subtract out the new local government aid that we got. So that gives us, that square in the green, $671,000. So I think in your, in your background material, it was even a little bit, tiny bit larger number, but as Heather said, numbers are coming in as daily as we speak on how to calculate these things and information provided by the state on calculating these things. So we're looking at 671,000 available for those general levies. If you look at that planned increase, we were looking at 1.8 to match that. So we, our difference is 1.189, and so that is very much attributable to that money that we had set aside for the ITF levy to increase. When we look at sources of funds, in the general fund, the majority of the general fund revenue does come from property taxes. We have other revenues that represent only about 27%. And while we look at all of those for opportunities to maximize those revenues, they're not going to make up the difference of what we need. Other sources of revenue would include intergovernmental revenue from local government aid, MSA municipal state aid, other grants such as community development block grant, charges for services, for instance, our EMS revenue for ambulance service and recreation services, and then there's permits, licenses, fines, and forfeits. What are the cost pressures? This is a chart that you've seen just about every year, I think, and it looks similar, again, on the employee services being the largest portion, as they do represent the largest portion of our expenditures as we're a service organization. At 737,000 for employee services, including that increase to police and fire para. And we also, every other year, have general election expense that is about $100,000. And we have been consistent in handling this by using fund balance in the off years. So this is not something that's swinging our expense needs because we're balancing it with fund balance. That number is included in the net increase in non-tax revenues and decrease in use of reserves. So as we look at all of the revenues that we have and use of reserves, that will provide about $320,000 to offset some of those cost expenses. I skipped over the line, current expenditures and net of sales tax savings. And it, the sales tax savings about, covers our expected inflationary increases in current expenses, so we're kind of counting on that as an offset at this point. Much more work will be done by our department staff in all areas as we go forward in the, over the next couple of months, as they pore over and look at all the five-year data. As Jim was talking about earlier in the audit presentation, the savings that, in budget to actual, that the departments have been experiencing, they have access to all those five-year trends on every single account that they have, and they are looking at those to see where some of those savings can be utilized in the budget process, or if there are some unmet needs, we're looking at those things as well. And then we also have instituted last year, transfer for PAC debt and operations, just an increase of 40,000, and that is because of meeting the host fees not being quite what we had expected. We're building in a bit of an increase there. And then as we look at our funding for our adopted plans, the infrastructure trust fund, as we talked about, the Emerald Ashbore, back on the increase of 50,000 each year, and the street revolving fund, which is a small fund that we use to seal coat and maintain those kinds of, that kind of road improvements, crack sealing, that sort of thing. Some cost increases as occurs in that fund. Parks Capital, which was delayed, is funding, restoration of funding on that. Again, last year, we delayed 100,000. This year, we're proposing 45,000, which is the plan as it was in your 2013 budget book. Equipment vehicle facilities and IT capital fund, that again, is a restoration of funding that, we did do a lot of cutting in the vehicle area a number of years ago, slowing down of the replacements and that sort of thing, and so this is, is getting us back on track there. And then EDA operations, funding of 25,000. This graph just gives you an idea of how we got to the, where we've come with these estimates over time. From last year at this time, which is the green bar, what were we estimating for those particular years? And then in the red bar is what happened as we got all the way through the budget process, what were the effects of the decisions that we made? And then the blue bars are our most recent estimates that you're seeing here tonight. So as you can see in the out years, we're pretty consistent in choices and things that have happened are affecting the more current years. This chart, the, hopefully you'll be able to read the words, they look a little bit small on there, but this is showing the change in our market value of the properties within Burnsville. If you looked at this chart last year, it was really flipped upside down. We had, the purple part shows how much of a value increase existing properties had. So when the county assessor determines the values of the properties, the existing properties within Burnsville, this is the increase on those, on those properties. The green is new construction, so how much was built within Burnsville. The first three columns show the different types of properties, so apartments, and the middle one is commercial and industrial and residential. So you can see from this graph that residential has picked up, and we're seeing increases of existing properties in the market value. With the commercial and industrial, very flat. If you look at most commercial and industrial properties, they are valued exactly the same as they were last year, with a few that are causing that small decrease of purple there below the zero line. But as a net, their values did not increase. And then apartments are somewhere in the middle. If you add all of them together, and you can't add percentages, but if you add all the values together, that's the final column on the right, and you're seeing more of a 2.3, I think that number is.
Yeah.
Value, market value increase on, on existing properties within Burnsville. So I think that's good news for...
Yeah. Mary?
Yeah, Kelly, when you, for the change in total market value, this would be for the tax, tax capacity for, this coming for 2014.
Yes, this is taxable market value. Yes, you're correct.
For payable for 2014, correct.
Yeah. So how would, if we were to levy 1.9 million, 1.89 million additional property tax this year, if that was possible, where would that, who would be paying and where would that money be coming from? And as you can see, the top line is that TIF II, as we've been talking about, the decertification, those properties would generate about a million one. And the parcels that had new construction are, were projecting about 200,000. That number is also a little squishy at this point in time, but that, that's about how much is provided, just because we have new, new construction within Burnsville. And then the general tax base would be picking up 548,000, or about 2% for a total of 6.9. This shows the difference between the tax levy and the tax rate. They don't necessarily operate in conjunction with each other. And you can see from this, the red bars, that is the tax rate. And from, the graph goes from 2006 to current. The first few years, we had increasing property values, which is the denominator in the equation of how property taxes are spread to properties within Burnsville. So as the value increased, even though the levy was increasing, the tax rate was decreasing. And then as you get to the middle bars, those were the years that the property values were decreasing, so that denominator was decreasing, and that drives the property tax rate up. What the council can control is the levy itself, and those are the blue bars. The one year in 2012, that, pardon me, that that was the decrease, that was the change in the tax calculations for market value homestead exclusion. The question is always, what does, what does this mean to an individual homeowner or an individual business? So there is no average home or average business, but we try to take some sample properties, take a look at what, what would happen to them under these, under the circumstances of the average increase and/or decrease or, and average value. So the first column, they're the median, rather, the middle column, medium valued home. Those are numbers we get from Dakota County. They tell us what is the, what was last year's value of the median home in Burnsville, 184,000, and what is the current value? And that was an increase of 3.6%. And on the commercial property, we were looking at, we've always, for quite a number of years, used the million-dollar property as, as our sample property, and without an increase this year, as we look at, the commercial property is not increasing. This would mean an additional $40 per year for a medium-valued home, and additional $64 per year for commercial property, or monthly increases of $3 and $5. As you can see, since, since the property values of residential's are going up and commercials are not going up, we're having a shift again, and we've had these over the years. They, they don't tend to increase at the same rate. So since it is a pie that we're dividing up amongst property values, if values of one type of property are going up faster than another type of property, the taxes are shifting that way. So we are seeing right now a shift back to the residential. And this particular chart also shows you the effect for the last couple of years and then our projected out years of, if we increased our levy, which is the red bar, at the, at what we are projecting here, how would that affect the median-valued home? And you can see the blue bar would be how much property tax they would pay, and the green bar is how much their, a percentage, on a percentage basis, what their value of their home is going up.
Mary?
A question. When you say this would show the effect, so in 2014, that's the last column there of bars?
2014 is actually the third column of bars.
Oh, 20...
The first two are historic.
Okay, preliminary.
Yeah, 12 and 13.
But 6.9, we can't do 6.9.
Yeah.
We, or do you, or my, do you know, we're talking about that yet?
With the levy, yeah.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sherry, we'll, we'll get to that in a minute.
But the reason that I bring it up now is that this, I mean, why are we even talking about it this way, at 6.9, because we can't do it?
But I think there are some things that we can challenge our staff, if you heard Jim and also some other things. I think they can come back to us. The only thing I want to make sure we protect is that increment, because it's 4-point-something. What was that, Kelly? Go back to your other slide.
Oh.
Because if you look at it, Mary, it's that, that slide. See, that's, that's where that is. It's the shift. It's 4.1. The others, so I'm going to suggest...
And I know, I know where we can go that way, but what I'm saying is that if somebody's looking at this, and then they see, to, you know, go over two slides again where I raised my question.
Yeah.
You know, they, they see 6.9, well, I don't know, I don't know a simpler way to do it either.
I think there's a way, but let our staff, let our staff go through it, because...
But I, maybe, maybe what I, I could ask staff to do at this point is highlight that you are going to discuss at this point, that that, that bar's going to change.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sherry, we are going to discuss some options. But we, before we can present you with options, we really need some guidance from you about what's on the table, what's off the table, which will impact what that 6.9...
And if I can have a commercial here, it's a perfect example for how this legislature has taken away local control.
That's right. Exactly.
I mean, I just go wild. Excuse me, I might not look like it, but I am.
Well, you and I can get on our soapbox and everybody will hear about it, because I think it's ridiculous. But I think what our staff is doing here is making sure that our citizens understand when we do these projections, we're doing it within our, within our control, and then now we have no more control.
Now we have the rug pulled out from under us.
That's right. So at least we have some historical information and the pressures of what we have to work through. Yeah.
Fine. Thank you.
And if I might point out one last thing on this particular side, that goes to what you're speaking to, is that the past two years, you had a levy, if you see those two red bars, you had a levy decrease of three, over 3%, and, and only an increase of 2% in 2013, planning for your increase in 2014, when it would be absorbed by those TIF properties being decertified. So, yes, plans change.
So why don't you further help the homeowners and our residents by explaining, just summarizing what we did for planning with the TIF money, and then, of course, we'll later explain how that's changed. Why don't you put it in simple terms, what...
Do you like to do that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Coughlin, essentially, as Mr. I said earlier, when you have a TIF district, you are essentially taking that value and the taxes that's generated in that value and keeping it there. The reason you do that is to increase those values. It's generally speaking, an economic development tool to make sure that those values are accelerated. Then when that district is decertified, that value is for the good of the whole. And so in order to get that, that into your general levy, that's what that increase is. But you, you know, kind of, pardon, pardon the sort of feels-like factor, is how I refer to it, is that, you know, you can, you are able to capture that money, but it doesn't feel like a tax increase, if you will.
Yeah, because it's already existing that...
They're already paying it. They're already paying it.
We had already factored in from last year that we're going to get the million dollars from the TIF district as part of our long-term planning, which now has changed because of what the legislature has done in our circumstance. So I want our citizens to understand that we had, had no notice of this, it was not something that was up for discussion in the past, and we planned for this.
And we planned because we were going to take that money to backfill the shortfall that we created in the infrastructure trust fund.
Correct. As we tried to be very frugal for a number of years, knowing that we'd have access to these funds until now, the legislature has taken that control away from us in the circumstances.
Well, and if I can add, and really, this is a compliment to staff, and that is, our auditor just said how really well-thought-out our financial dealings are and position, and complimented our long-range planning. And now, over... And now, over in St. Paul, they say, you can't plan anymore. Okay, excuse me, carry on.
And I'm sure there are some other cities that have TIF district tax issues as well, and whether the legislature was knowledgeable about these problems or not.
They didn't care.
They didn't, either they didn't care or they didn't know. And I'm sure, I'm sure there are other cities that did similar intelligent planning as this, so I just want to make that clear as we march through the rest of this information.
Yeah. So for our citizens to understand, we're frustrated, but we're going to get this done because we have a great staff. Okay, move along. And they're going to, we're going to challenge you to protect that money, find a way of, stay within the levy limits, but stay on the course. So go ahead.
And this graph shows exactly the same thing for the commercial example, so I don't think there's anything more probably to be had on that. So if you were to reduce the tax levy, as you indicated, how are we going to deal with this? If reducing or post, reducing the tax levy was one way to go about it, you could delay, reduce, or just cancel the infrastructure trust fund increase of 1.1 million. You could delay the Emerald Ash Borer of 50,000, EDA operations of 25,000. That actually would not, since we don't have a levy limit on the EDA fund, that one wouldn't necessarily help you in that particular instance, but parks capital, and then the equipment vehicle facilities and IT fund capital increases, and street maintenance capital fund. Now, all of those have the five-year financial plans, and we will be bringing back to you where those fund balances look, but you can, you can actually go back to the 2014, or rather, 2013 budget document and see where those ending fund balances are. And if you take those funding increases out of there, you can see where the fund balance will go if that happens. Another option is to reduce services, and you have, you know, that would be your direction. There's also potential use of general fund reserve, and as Jim talked about, that we would be talking about the fund balance, here we are talking about the fund balance. Right now, those preliminary projections include the ICE Center debt transfer that you committed and assigned in the fund balance to reduce debt service, and also includes use of fund balance for election expense. That's one of those that we've historically used every other year to even out, so we don't have a spike and then a drop and a spike. No planned capital one-time expenditures are in that projection at this time, but we will review those as we go about our process of looking at capital. We do like to, if we're using fund balance, try to focus on those one-time expenditures so that it's not something that we use fund balance to fund operations this year, and then we just made our problem bigger for the following year. You may also want to set aside a portion of the reserve for debt service to protect against volatility of host fees, as we know that those have been, it's an option. In your policy, in your council financial management plan, there's a policy that says that annually you review the fund balance to see if you want to transfer some of your available fund balance to the EDA fund. And we are not proposing that that happens at this time, but we just want to address it. It's in the policy. This is the status of your fund balance right now, some historical, and 2012 is the second from the right bar, and then the finalists are projected for 2013. I apologize for the small numbers on that. Mary?
If I, my memory is right, in the audit, didn't the auditor point out that we were about $2 million over in the fund balance? Or, I mean, $1 million over?
Undesignated. Designated and the cash flow.
So is that something we would have to work with?
That's what I want them, because I saw that when I was going through the CAFR. And so I think they can take that and make some pay with everything else that we have. And then that darn LGA, one-time.
Good Lord. You can't even buy a police car with that.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sherry, you are correct that what the auditor said is we're about $1 million over our policy in terms of the designated reserve.
And that includes the undesignated for emergency.
Yes. If you look at the stacked bar, the bottom section is the restricted, so those are our solid waste tipping fees that have legal restrictions on how we can spend those. So those are the most restricted. The red are things that we've already planned for in our budgets. So those, we've planned in the 2013 budget to use some fund balance already, so we've assigned that. And then the green is our 35% policy, so 35% of next year's expenditures, and that's for cash flow, and that has to do with the way we get our revenues for property taxes. We have to go until June until we get half of the property tax revenue. And then the purple is that unassigned and designated for emergencies. And so that is at 3 million currently.
And we always plan 2.
2 has been the guideline, so we do have some above that emergency balance.
So.
Do you want me to go back?
The key dates, no, because I'm ready to have a discussion with the council.
Okay. Key dates coming up. We are right now doing our annual kickoff here, where you're seeing what the possibilities are. In August, we're going to come back to you to discuss what the max tax is, and we have to set that September 3rd.
Well, we can't go over 3.
That might be a little easier this year than.
Can we go home now?
No. In, last year, we changed from the open house to a virtual open house with the video. We're planning to do that again, if you're okay with that.
Yeah, it worked well.
It was good. So we would release that in mid-October, and that kind of goes over what each department does. And then there's also a budget, or a department presentation at your work session, October 29th, where you'll hear from department heads about what they do in their departments and challenges they're facing. And then in November, we use the two work sessions to go over all the details of the budget, and the first one being general fund and any property tax-supported funds, and the second one being your capital projects, CIP and enterprise funds. And then December 3rd would be the adoption of the tax levy and budget. So we start a good six-month process.
Thank you. Bill?
So to capture the TIF money, do we then just not raise other?
Well.
So if we don't do that, and we do it in some other fashion, we don't, what happens to that TIF money that we would have recognized this year?
That's where I would suggest, councilmembers, is that we direct our staff to go back and do that work, and to stay the course, but find a way of capturing that money so that we don't lose it.
Right.
So, and that's the challenge we're going to give you. Stay the course. There's a million dollars there that we can use. There are some other funds, the 87, and see if, what can we do with that one time? Because I don't, we should not put that LGA into the, into the general fund, because we can't depend on that. They might give it us today, and they pull the rug from under us next, next year.
Oh, but I'm seriously worried about that tax recognition.
Oh, me too.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Coughlin.
Me too.
I'll answer your question, but I also do want to say that then, I think, one of the things, we've got some questions for you all to give us some guidance on, and that will determine how we come back and what options we provide to you. If we don't capture that this year, you know, to go back to sort of the feels-like factor, if you decide to capture that in a future year, you don't have that offsetting value. The value goes back on the property tax rolls, and that would then be, if you were to capture that in a future year, you would have to capture that by increasing the rate at a more significant.
And that's our problem right now. It is our problem, and I'm going to say, have them go back. They're the professionals. Have them go, and we challenge them to find a way to save that million dollars, because it has to go in. And I think, stay the course on everything, because we have that million dollars that can offset all that other stuff that we have.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I think that there are a series of questions here, if we can just maybe walk through some of them, and I think that the mayor is addressing the first one in terms of, you know, the financial plan funding levels. What we're trying to do is figure out if what you would like us to do is try and figure out a way to continue the planned spending at the level that was discussed last year in 2014.
That, based on the assumption, if that million dollars can be captured, because that's, for me, that's, that could make a big difference in how I decide.
Well, because we do have to backfill that trust fund.
I know, but that's how we planned on doing it.
Yeah, yes.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Coughlin, you capture that increment by changing your other levies, and so that's how.
By changing your other, I'm sorry.
Your other levies. And so that's how, so you basically, instead of having it over here as TIF revenue, you increase your general fund levy in order to capture it. You see what I'm saying? And so.
Got it.
That reserve is taxes.
But does that raise everyone's taxes?
That, well, that gets back to the rate question.
Yeah.
If you do it at the time when the TIF district is decertified, you insulate that increase of the rate. And so if you do, that's kind of, that's the push and the pull. And so you're capturing it, but it's not, but the impact is not felt by the taxpayer because you have the increased value, kind of.
Yeah. So here's what I'm going to say. Somewhere in all of this history and experience, this situation has arisen before. How did other cities in the past dealt with something like this, when a, when a TIF district is decertified, and how to?
And then the legislature took the power to tax, limited the power to tax on the.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, generally speaking, other cities have faced these kinds of challenges within the constraints of levy limits, and you look toward your other, other authorities that are available to you. One of the things, I'm kind of jumping around here on some of the discussion items, I mean, you look at your debt service levy. You heard Ms. I say earlier, we fund debt in a number of different ways. We don't have it all on our debt service levy. We can look to something, we can look at where we fund those and how we fund those different pieces of debt, and increase the debt service levy, and have all of our debt come out of the debt service levy.
Because it's not in the levy limit, in this law that came out. And that's what I'm saying. Have them, they, it's just don't want to lose that million dollars. Yeah, Mary?
Well, I guess I'm looking at the screen here and looking at the planned funding Ever since I've been on council, we've been delaying or reducing funding, and I'm very, very concerned.
What that means in the future.
It does. I mean, I think that we've really, I think we've pushed the envelope about as far as I can go on delaying, particularly when it comes to our, our infrastructure, our roads.
And also our parks.
And our parks, absolutely. And perhaps, yeah, perhaps some of those, those parks improvements could be considered one-time improvements. Maybe you could look at that. But I also feel the same way with the Emerald Ash Borer. I mean, even though when Terry Schultz came in the last time, he gave us a little more optimistic projection on the cost of that, it's still going to really be terribly expensive. And I think that to delay setting money aside for that would be a terrible mistake.
Yeah, and I agree with you, and that's why I would say, direct our staff to stay the course on the plan that we had put forth, and come back within the levy limit. So that's it. But the thing that I'm, and give us, what are the options in that million dollars from the TIF district?
Madam Members of the council, if I can ask, if we maybe could jump back and forth again, there are three items listed under explore funding options within the constraint of levy limits. One of them is debt issuance for capital funding. You all have scaled back some of that. We could issue some debt for capital projects. Those are allowable expenses for the debt service levy. And so the question is, obviously, we would do that within the 2% that we have talked about, probably much within the, you know, way under the 2%.
Way under market.
But we want to know if that's something that, that's something that you would be willing to entertain as an option.
Yeah.
I could live with that.
Yeah.
Inside a mechanism to get the TIF money?
Yes.
Yeah.
If I, go back to.
And that's the reason why I'm saying, let them do it. Let's just give them direction. Stay the course on those three items in terms of the plan that we have done, because, Mary, to your point, we have spent so much time on this. If we delay anymore, it's going to cost a spike up in the future, and we have really tried to keep everything at a minimum and leveled off.
Well, and I would further add, not only will it take a spike, but in the meantime, the city will get terribly run down in the process, and I do not want that to be happening on my watch.
No, and we don't want that to happen when we're trying to make sure that we don't lose that bond, that triple A operating. So stay the course and find a way for us to use that, we don't lose a million dollars from the TIF district.
I'm sorry. Madam Mayor, I came back to the slide to show you, the top two lines are the lines where you have flexibility to move some of that planned increase up to those top two lines. So if you take out in that planned increase column, if you were to move some of the 1,808 up to the top two lines, those don't have the levy limits.
Mm-hmm.
So that is one option.
Do what we need to do.
Legally.
Obviously, we would do everything within the law.
But don't break any laws. Stay within our statutes.
Oh, you're a lawyer.
Heather, what you're, what you're hearing.
What I'm hearing.
City manager and finance director, what you're hearing from us is that, stay the course and bring back a plan that's going to be within the 3%.
For the general levy.
For the general levy. And find a way to get that million dollars that's going to help us with our ITF, and then tell us how the ITF looks.
Okay. Madam Mayor, we'll do that. Are there any particular service level changes that you wanted us to bring back to? We have the MBN.
We're down to the bone on that.
However, 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 I also always want to encourage staff, and I think it's part of the culture now, to, to, to really, you're on the front line, and the people who work under you are on the front line. And I know you always encourage people to suggest ways of doing things faster, better, cheaper, and I just want to thank you for that, first of all, and also encourage that that continues.
Yeah. And you all are doing a great job with the limited resources that we have, and the use of technology in some of this stuff, also reaching out to our partners and stakeholders, leveraging all of that. We've accomplished a great deal by just doing those kinds of things, and that's been reflected in what we did down in Cliff Bend and the new playground at, at Cliff Bend, the new Lions Club playground. It's using all of those things that, and our citizens and our stakeholders see that we do a good job, and they help us in a lot of those things. So stay the course. I don't think we can, I mean, we've reduced and reduced, and now we're, we don't, we get, you've seen the emails we get with some of the decisions we've made in service. get, you've seen the emails we get with some of the decisions we've made in service changes last year and the year before. I think if we make any more service changes, we're going to have an outcry from our citizens on some of the things that we've done.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, with that, if there's, let us know if there's any additional information you'd like. Otherwise, what I'm hearing from you is a consensus that we would bring back several different options, but that we have some availability.
Dan Keely has sent a text, and essentially, he just wants to have up for discussion, be aware, staff be aware to, he'd like to have it considered earmarking somewhere $50,000 of the $1 million fund balance excess for the garage to the Boys and Girls Club building remodel. And that's his text.
That's an add-on.
Right, I'm just reading his text.
Well, that wasn't in the plan. How about if we wait for the, getting the report? I know that that's what he wants.
I'm just putting it out there that if, I suspect what he's saying, and I don't mean to speak for him, is that if we find a way to capture the TIF money, and we still have a $1 million excess fund, that is what...
But we have to fund all the other stuff.
I'm just saying what he's, I'm relaying what he is saying in his text, so.
Okay. And we can't take the money away from ITF. But anyway...
You talk the fund balance money, I think is what he's talking about.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Coughlin, I think I understand what you're saying, that the Councilmember Keely would like that to be considered as a possible use of the fund balance.
TIF money for the infrastructure, and there's still the excess $1 million that is...
But we still also had a plan in place.
I'm just...
Yeah, and I understand, but I just want everybody to understand, we have a plan in place that we just directed staff. I think that was a consensus. Am I correct? Stay the course. Find a way to capture the TIF money. And if we have any other policy decision-making questions, I'll have that. But what I would like is the PowerPoint from yours tonight, Kelly, and then I also would like the PowerPoint from Jim, because all of those are all the summarization of the CAFR. So I like having that summary of both Jim's and Kelly's, so I don't have to flip through. Jenny, nice CAFR. I like your CAFR. I spent Sunday, because it was raining, reading through your 136-page CAFR.
Madam Mayor, I believe the city clerk will put the PowerPoints in the notes for the meeting, but we will also make sure we circulate them.
Well, because it's so, it's so good, because it's all summarized. And so the PowerPoint, if you can just send the PowerPoint.
Sure.
It's all summarized.
With that, the next budget discussion is scheduled for Tuesday, August 13th, at 6:30 PM, and that's when we will bring back to you some of these options that we have been discussing tonight. And so that's our next public budget discussion.
You've got a lot of heavy lifting in the month to do. You've got July.
A lot of people working on it, too, so.
Yeah. So, that's what we have for tonight. And everything is clear then, City Manager?
Yes, ma'am. We are, we are clear as to our direction, and that we'll bring back to you in August. Unless there are other questions, that concludes this presentation before we move on to roundtable. So, other questions?
Yeah, and if any of us have any questions, we'll also let you know in the meantime. But to our citizens, we are at, we serve at the pleasure of the legislature. And at many times, we make great plans, and we're looking at things that we do, but then decisions are made in St. Paul that have an effect in the plans that we laid out. And that's what we're facing now, and that's why our citizens are hearing the frustration tonight from each and every one of us. But we have a great staff, and we're going to, we're going to get through this, and it'll, and we'll still be in a healthy financial position.
Well, I just want to underscore the fact that our frustration stems with the fact that the legislature really has taken control away from us.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Bill, you have anything?
No, I don't.
Okay. Mary?
All right, no.
Suzanne?
No.
All we had was MLC, and guess what we talked about?
Levy limits.
Levy limits and the legislature, and all that went through. So Steve and I attended that, and I don't think we have to go through all of it. We already know everything that, and we've been reading everything about it. Mary?
Madam Mayor, a couple of things. First of all, I do have something from the Burnsville Community Foundation. We have a new website, and we should be live by the end of the week.
And good. I understand that you have been working on that website.
Well, mainly Amy Burl. She knows a lot.
Okay.
And I know more than I used to. But I also wanted to say, are we not dealing with the roundtable regarding the mowing of the boulevards?
Oh.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I...
Oh, I'm sorry. I, yes, because that's one of the things that we have to do. And I'm sorry, I didn't...
No problem. I just wanted to be sure it was still on the table.
I missed that. I was going down through all important items and went to roundtable, and, okay. The boulevard mowing, and as you all remember, the policy changes that we made on the boulevard mowing. And we have some citizens, and these are all of the reductions that we have made in service to our community. And we have some citizens that are not very happy about that service change, because they don't feel that the boulevards on the side where the property owners are asked to take care of are well-maintained. And so that's what we have. And so, Heather?
Madam Mayor, really, what we thought that would be helpful is really to come here tonight, restate what the current policy is for you all, and then if you wanted us to go back and do additional work on the policy, we could certainly do that. But we thought it would be helpful for the public, given that this time of year is the time that we tend to get these kinds of complaints, is really just to make sure that the public knows what the current policy is. And so Mr. Albrecht has kindly agreed to walk through that briefly for you all, and then you can give us direction as to whether or not you would like us to do additional work.
This is in your domain. And thank you very much, Mr. Albrecht, for always being so very kind and respectful in your response to our citizens about all these issues. And thank you so much.
No problem. What I'd like to do is maybe give a little breakdown of what the issues are, because we tend to lump boulevard issues into one thing. We have many different things in play with boulevards and maintenance. The city has 16,000-plus properties, and the majority of the property owners in the city mow the lawn to the street. The vast majority, 99% are responsible for that and have always been responsible for that. On our collector streets, however, we have circumstances, let's use Southcross, for example, or Nicollet, where you've got fences or impediments or things that make it somewhat difficult for them to mow all the way to the boulevard. And historically, up until a couple of years ago, the city on some of those streets had taken care of the mowing on both sides. We adopted that policy, I believe in 2009.
Yeah.
And that policy said that the city was no longer going to maintain non-public properties unless there was a hardship associated with accessing the property. In many cases, people have fences, or they really can't even get to the property to mow it, because it's how their existing property was.
Just like the power.
The hardship itself, over the last three years, the way we handle that is, city staff meets with property owners, looks at whether it's a legitimate hardship. About 50% of the properties actually qualify for a hardship because of how they were developed or built. So now we're talking about less than 1% of the properties in the community that feel they should be moved to this hardship level, whereas the other 99% are already mowing. So I don't think that that issue is as big of an issue as, they tend to be vocal, but it's a very small amount of the population. So at this time, staff wouldn't recommend that we, we think that that policy and the hardship process, and actually, the two that raised the issue last week, we believe they do have hardships, and we're working with them through that. So we think that they have legitimate hardships. And so that, we think that policy is taking care of itself. It has a minor cost savings to the city, but it's more really about fairness. The vast majority of property owners mow their property. We think they should be treated that way. So I think the other issue that we're having that's prevalent is, number one, Mother Nature, it wasn't an easy spring for mowing, and we had a lot of areas. The county only got through last week finishing their first mow in Burnsville. If you were on 42, up until a couple of weeks ago, we had foot and a half deep grass in the middle of 42, because the county just couldn't get caught up because of the rain. I think that people are starting to get caught up with the mowing. We're seeing the call volume drop substantially because people are getting caught up. People have high expectations that their neighbors are going to mow the same time they are. So that is getting caught up. What we want to relay to residents, too, though, is, we do have, through Request Tracker, active property maintenance enforcement. So if you see someone who isn't maintaining their lawn, or there's a weed issue, go to our Request Tracker on the website. There is yard maintenance section where you can fill out a ticket, and our, the next day, our maintenance staff or our property inspection staff will be out there, talking to those property owners, working with them. That's the best way and the least frustration to get some resolution there, because there's a myth out there that the city used to mow Portland, and many areas where we never have mowed historically. And so we want to make people aware that the city's never mowed some of these streets. It's just that we have had a changeover of our population. We have a lot of people that are new to the city or community. We have renters. We have people who either aren't used to necessarily maintaining that area, or are from someplace where they don't stress that type of maintenance, and so it's somewhat new to them. And we, and our staff, our property maintenance staff is willing to work with those individuals. So we're asking the residents, have a little patience, let us work through that with some of these new property owners, and we can resolve those issues that way, I think. The issue, the other issue that's out there is, there's some people that would like us to have the boulevard always be the same height, meaning that if the city mowed it, you know what, it would always look nice, because it would never be, this yard is higher, this yard is lower. And so while that would look nice, I don't think that that's probably practical for us when we look at all the properties that we maintain. And so, again, we think that we can deal with the hardship issue on the properties that we are helping out with, and then the enforcement. I think with those two things, we tend to get surges every year. This year, we think that surge of complaints was condensed because of the weather. And our park staff, which does the majority of that maintenance, feels like there's light at the end of the tunnel on those complaints, and so does our property maintenance staff. So we wouldn't recommend, unless the council feels strongly, that we evaluate the policy. We just, we feel like, let's continue to work with the property owners. We think we have a good policy and practice in place. We have good people with good customer service skills to work with those property owners, and that's the direction staff would recommend we go at this time.
And I think, yeah, I agree, too.
That sounds very, very true.
Yeah, it's reasonable. And the thing is, it is. And we all want our city to be well-groomed. And to your point, it's less than 1% of the folks who aren't doing that, and by working with them, we can get that done, so. Okay. Thank you. So that's good. But otherwise, yeah, MLC. And the other thing is that, remember the International Festival is in July? That's next month. I think it's the 13th. It's a Saturday, 3 to 9. So it's all ready to roll, and we have a rain contingency.
It's not going to rain.
I know.
It's got to stop.
Driest week of the year, statistically. So hopefully, we can...
It's got to stop sometime.
Yeah. So that's in place. So all of that is moving along very nicely, so, thank you. Otherwise, and then RCM, we didn't have a meeting because there was a housing summit. That was it? Okay. And if there's nothing else, we stand adjourned.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Thank you. Suzanne, it's your first.